Twenty sixteen to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Ceremonial item number one.
Proclamation declaring April two thousand and sixteen as DMV Donate Life California Month.
Great. Good afternoon. Organ tissue marrow and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And more than one hundred and twenty-one thousand individuals nationwide and more than twenty-one thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. One hundred and ninety individuals in Santa Barbara County and on average twenty-two people die nationally each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. More than six hundred thousand units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and at any given time, six thousand patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. A single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to fifty others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Over twelve million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim April as DMV Donate Life California Month and urge all citizens, all Californians, to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card. And thank you both for your leadership very much in this very important organization. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you. Feel free to introduce yourself and...
I'm Scott Burns. I've been around a while, it seems. One of the reasons I'm around is I ended up getting a kidney last Memorial Day from a lady who died suddenly, a nurse at Cottage Hospital, Vivian Butel. I'm going to read a short letter from someone else who received an organ from Vivian. Normally, about ten percent of the people that actually donate and die and donate organs actually hear from, or their families hear from, other people. So it doesn't happen very often. And how it happens is the organization, One Legacy, is kind of like the bridge, the bridge between the donors and the recipients, so because sometimes people don't want to know and don't really want to know what's going on, but some people, times they do. So we have a letter here I'm going to read from a gentleman who received a liver because of Vivian's death, and I received a kidney, and I just want to read this. Dear friends, this is the most difficult thank-you letter I have ever written. I've had opportunities to thank people for many reasons, but how do you say thank you for life itself? Without your kindness, I would not be alive writing this letter today. My name is Michael. I'm fifty-seven years old and live in California. In May of two thousand and fourteen, I was diagnosed with a form of incurable liver cancer. My only hope was a liver transplant, and I was put on a waiting list until a suitable donor could be found. Those were long and difficult weeks for myself and especially for my four children, who were devastated watching their beloved father wither away in pain and anguish before their eyes. And then the telephone call came. An angel had been found, someone whose family was willing to make the ultimate gift of life itself. I thank the Almighty that my transplant was successful, but more importantly, I thank you every day for what you have done for me and my family. I am truly sorry for your misfortune, but hope and pray that you will find comfort in the knowledge that you have restored the life of another person and brought relief and comfort to a very grief-stricken family. Our thoughts and blessings are with you, whoever you are, wherever you may be. Thank you for the gift of life. Michael and family. Why I brought this letter out was to realize it's just not us. There's all over California, all over the world, there are people who are being saved because of Donate Life. And I'm an ambassador, you guys see me a couple times a year, and I hope you remind this, and from what the city has done, reminding people of why you want to put the pic down on your driver's license is why things like this letter are written. So with that being said, I'm turning my time over to this nice young lady. Thank you. And any questions afterwards?
Hi, my name is Lisa Marciano, and I'm the One Legacy Coordinator for Santa Barbara City of Santa Barbara. I work with Cottage Hospital and the other hospitals in Santa Barbara. I'm also a recipient. I am a kidney transplant recipient of over twenty-five years. Both my older sisters and my younger brother have had kidney transplants. It is only through the kindness of strangers that my entire family exists today. That's why this is such an important reason for people to sign up in the DMV or online at Donate Life California. We would like everyone to live a long and happy and healthy life, but if you're in the position to donate and help others, you can become a hero, and it gives a legacy and comfort to your family. That's why it's so important to think about this and talk to your families about your decision to donate organ or tissue. Thank you so much for the proclamation. It is very important that the word gets out that the more we talk about this, the more lives will be saved, because twenty-two people dying a day is not twenty-two people. It's twenty-two mothers, or fathers, or uncles, aunts, colleagues. It's the equivalent of twenty-two jumbo jets filled with people going down in one year with no survivors. And to have to watch your loved one slowly die because there aren't enough organs is just a tragedy for those families. So thank you very much for the proclamation, and I, you know, thank my donor for being here and being vertical today. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions? Did you have a question?
This is a really moving thing that you read and said, "Thank you both," and reminds me that I got to check and see if I got that little spot thing that you put on the back of your license. I think mine may have come off, so I stand corrected. Thank you.
Whatever happens, you're still my friend. It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are going to remove item number two, and that'll be rescheduled at a date to be determined.
Okay. Do we need a motion to move it, or just...
So moved.
Oh, I guess we don't. We don't need one? We don't need one. Okay. So we're just going to take it off the agenda for consent? Okay. And then public comment, I do have a couple of public comments. Speaker slips here. We'll start with Bob Mayo, to be followed by Phil Walker, two minutes here at the podium. Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. As I remember, Montecito dropped out of the desal permit back after the ninety-five rains.
Yeah, I'm going to stop you there. Are you wanting to talk about the Montecito? Because that's on our agenda today.
I know it is, and I'll be gone in two seconds.
I know, but...
Please.
I really, to be fair, it needs to be when the item's on the agenda, so I'll hold on to this when we get to it, okay? Thank you very much. Phil Walker, to be followed by Pete Del Bello.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. You know, it's been windy, on and off, and a lot of the council members and people in this room have been here a long time, like myself. I've been down on Quinientos Street for forty years picking up palm fronds. The Mexican fan palms are pretty well stripped out, so there is a concern with the skirts that haven't been attended to, especially on the private properties. And I see things essentially setting up. It's drying out so fast right now, like prior to the Hesoceta fire. And I sense it, and we've gone from moist to very desiccated, almost like overnight. And it bears attention and concern, both with the city and private property owners. So one other quick thing, you know, forty years picking up the fronds, they're seventy-five, ninety-foot tall, the Mexican fan palms. At one point, they did have a bucket truck with a subcontractor trimming them, but that's the one time in forty years I've seen a bucket up. So the neighbors take care of it, and there needs to be a little bit more public outreach where to place the fronds once they're down, because people try to keep them out of the streets, but you should not have to risk getting run over to dash out in the street and pick them up and move them. Thank you very much.
Okay. So Pete Del Bello, I see Michael. Miranda, you're waving your two minutes. Is Pamela Newman here? Yep. And Fernando Medina? Is Fernando here? Okay. So, Mr. Del Bello, you have up to eight minutes, and you're the final public comment speaker.
Okay. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Del Bello, and I'm a Santa Barbara native. I want to invite everyone to the State of the Library event at 6:30 PM tonight at the Faulkner Gallery at the Downtown Library. The library does excellent work, and library director Jessica Cadiante and her staff deserve our support. Our library offers an astounding amount of educational programming, technology, coaching, and literary learning for all ages, so I hope there is a good crowd since this is Jessica's Super Bowl. And once again, that is 6:30 tonight at the Faulkner Gallery at the Downtown Library. It will be the highlight of my social calendar. You know, I go to so many city-related meetings that many people think that I work for the city, and some think I'm the city councilman, even though that election won't happen until next year. But people think that because they see me all over the place. I often talk about my love for this city. My parents both worked in this building, right here at City Hall. They taught me the importance of city employees and how they are public servants. My late father, J.J. Del Bello, was an accountant, so he often mentioned the taxpayers and that they were the ones that paid his salary. All government employees and elected officials are here to serve the public, and the organizational chart makes that clear. That is why the way Urban Forest Superintendent Tim Downey treats people bothers me so much. There are thirty thousand trees in the city of Santa Barbara. I didn't go out and count all of them, but I believe the Parks and Rec Department is accurate in that figure. Thirty thousand trees. Thirty thousand trees, and Mr. Downey is more concerned with my three palm trees in front of my residence. Recently, I learned that I wasn't the only person that has had problems with Mr. Downey. My thorough research has found that other residents, as well as arborists, have been angry. Mr. Downey and his government overreach have made the Parks and Rec Department look bad. He's made the mayor and city council look bad, and he has made the city look bad. Remember, it all goes back to the organizational chart. So it's not just certified arborist Gene Tyburn that is angry. It seems that Mr. Tyburn, who I just met two weeks ago, and I aren't the only ones, it turns out we're the only ones that have the courage to talk about it. I've learned that some people are afraid of Mr. Downey, and these are taxpayers, the people paying his salary. My problems with Mr. Downey go back to two thousand and eleven. My father had planted three palm trees years before. I argued with him, saying that they will grow too tall and take, too tall to be taken care of, and not to plant them on city property because, you know, God forbid, we have to take them out, then we have to go to the city, and that's, you know, be an extra time. And unfortunately, he didn't listen to me, and lucky for him, my father never had to deal with Mr. Downey. So I had three palm trees, and this is how they looked. They were twenty feet, over twenty feet tall. And they're also eight feet in, and this is the, and up to this little wall, and you can see how tall they are, they're taller than the house, and the, they go all the way, the city property goes all the way to this little wall here. So, and my health was not good at the time, so I went to the city to have them removed at no cost to the city, and pay for it myself, and Mr. Downey refused, and I had to go before the City Park Commission and even offered to donate the trees, these three trees, which I valued at fifteen thousand dollars, to the city. And I lost and appealed to Mr. Downey, because that's the only, I could only appeal to, and said that I could replace the trees, but he wouldn't let me remove the trees. So while we talked in his office, I told him that common sense would let me have no trees, but common sense doesn't exist in Mr. Downey's office. So I also mentioned that, at the time, we were not in a drought, but I said, "One day, we will be in a drought." It obviously takes water to grow trees, and these are trees I don't have the health to maintain, and the city's not going to maintain them because they got too many trees already. And here we are, you know, and I obviously didn't have the health that I do today, otherwise you would have heard about this a long time ago. And so I, and then here we are, we wound up soon after in a drought, and I'm going to live another forty, fifty years, so those of you keeping score at home, I think we're going to have another four to five more droughts in my lifetime. So since I didn't have the health to keep fighting over this, I didn't have the health to file a complaint, I didn't have the health to come here, I replaced the trees with bottle palm trees, which are limited in height to twelve feet. Well, the first tree didn't take, and then, as I mentioned, the drought came, so I naturally cut back on my watering. So the first thing I did was not water trees I don't want. So the third tree died, and as a present to myself, last year, I took it out on Christmas. And I would take out the second, the remaining tree right now, but I don't want to get this nice tie dirty. So, and what concerns me, as I've mentioned, I'm not the only person upset with Mr. Downey, and when there's so many things, the property owners do not want to see their property values go down, and the arborists want to do a good job so they can keep getting returned work. So he should be focusing in on the trees at hand at the city, such as these pictures here, these, I didn't take these pictures myself because I can't take a picture of myself while I'm in them, you know? These were taken by Pamela Newman, and photo art by Pamela. This is in front of the Mission. You can't see the pedestrian crossing sign. This was just a few months ago. So I trimmed, you know, with the permission of the Mission, I trimmed and cleared, and now you can see it. But you can only imagine if he was concerned about things, just like over here on Ortega Street, it looks dizzy. On Haley Street, you can't see, there's a dead palm tree. And on Carpinteria Street, when you take Salinas, you can't even turn left to see the street sign. So my suggestion is that Jill Zachary and the City Council look into how Mr. Downey treats people. He should consider himself fortunate that I'm not on the City Council right now. If Mr. Downey doesn't clean up his act, a phone call in a couple of years from Councilman Del Bello is a call he doesn't want to receive. Thank you for your kind attention.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, there's some items to read.
Item two, adoption of waterfront hotel development agreement and amendment to Chapter two-eight-nine-five of the zoning ordinance recommending that Council A adopt by reading of title only.
We're pulling that item, item two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Item three, introduction of ordinance approving sale of excess city land at five-three-six Bath Street related to the CODA Street Bridge Replacement Project recommending that Council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the land purchase agreement escrow instructions and grant deed for the sale of certain city excess land located at five-three-six Bath Street to NGC Fund One LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, in the amount of five-hundred-seventy-nine thousand dollars. And item four, Central Coast Water Authority Bond refinancing and introduction of ordinance to amend the water supply agreement recommending that Council A adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving certain information for inclusion in an official statement relating to the Central Coast Water Authority refunding revenue bonds, Series two thousand and sixteen A state water project regional facilities, and approving certain other matters in connection therewith, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney. And B, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the approval and execution by the city of the First Amendment to the Water Supply Agreement.
Thank you. Without further adjection, we're waving, we'll waive further reading. For those who came in a little late, we, there was a request to pull item two, so we did that, so we'll do the consent calendar minus item two. There's a public request to speak on item seven. Mr. Hotchkiss wanted to pull item nine, and I know Ms. Antle needed to talk about items ten and twelve, so we're going to go in order. So why don't we start with item seven, if you could read item seven?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, and were there any others?
I have questions on number seven. Can we pull that just for discussion?
We're doing that right now, because there's some public record, public records, public comment requests for item seven. So if we can, any other items to pull from consent? No. So if you could read item seven.
Commitment of home funds and revision to documents to comply with low-income housing tax credit requirements for the new affordable housing project at five-ten to five-twenty North Salsapuatus and six-oh-one East Haley Street, Jardin de las Roses.
Thank you. So Mr. Martenson, and then Mr. Posh, if you want to come on up. There's two minutes here at the podium for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here only to answer questions regarding my memo, and I hope that all of you have read that. And I'm going to give the rest of my time here to Dr. Posh for his comments.
Okay. Mr. Posh?
Madam Mayor, councilman, I just want to go ahead and talk about that of the project on five-ten Salsapuatus. And I want to go ahead and start by that of saying that I've been a lifelong, thirty-five years of that of somebody who lives in Santa Barbara on that of the Haley and Salsapuatus area. And I want to say that I am worried...
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
I am worried about that of the flooding to my neighbors and to my property. An elevation of approximately five feet to the entire property at five-ten Salsapuatus with dirt makes me think more of a problem in the immediate area than Mr. Craig Stewart of that of Penfield and Smith's gives in the flooding asset adjustment memorandum. He forgets two important facts. The canal to the ocean is poorly designed. Sometimes the canal is full. He also forgot that there's additional water that is distributed on this particular area from Catholic charities, and there's also a small river, when it rains, on the backside of the property. The entire drain area is huge, and Craig goes ahead and says that it only will raise that of these multiple air gears on the outside by one inch. But I am not in the outside area, I am next to the berm, and that may be a very intense area for me. But I'd like to say to that of the people that are working on this particular project that if a hundred percent of the water displacement by that of the dirt berm is retained and stored, we will stop fighting for this particular item again. Also, I'd like to say that that of, at the MD, Metropolitan Transit District, they have a two-story building, and this two-story building is supported with that of grade beams to sixty feet in the ground. Across the street, in less than a half a block away, there's another building that is approximately that of a story and a half, and it is a warehouse, and the city required that that of, they put caissons to thirty feet deep there in order to support that unit. At this particular time, the building on that of five-ten Salsapuatus has absolutely no caissons, nothing at all. They are trying to do a tension band method with that of concrete, and that's very iffy. I think that that of you and everybody should know that that is not a, in my mind, a very good way when you're considering putting a building up that has over forty-five feet of stature in this very unusual, very, very terrible soil. Thank you for listening to that. The last thing I have is that of, I have been talking to different officials, and they tell me that lamp black...
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you very much. Your time is up. You've been now the four minutes between the two speakers. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss, did you have a question on this one? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Dominguez.
I just wanted to confirm the language in here, commitment, conversion of a preliminary award of five-hundred thousand to a commitment, so that's, this is all just part of a loan from the city, if I understand the language correctly?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm David Raul, the Housing Project Planner. Back in February tenth of two thousand and fifteen, we came before the Council to get a preliminary award of home funds, and the way home funds operate is that we have to be sure that all the financing is in place for the project in order to convert it to a commitment. So back on February tenth, it was approved by Council, and this is simply no new money, it's just a conversion into a commitment. I hope I answered your question.
What is a commitment?
The commitment, commitment is an additional five-hundred thousand dollars being added to the nine-hundred thousand dollar home loan agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss, item nine, actually, Susan, if you could read item nine.
Thank you.
Let me just read the item first.
Contract for design of paseo, landscape, lighting, and other improvements at City Parking Lot Three, Chapala and Figueroa Streets.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Right, thank you. For staff, Rob, I just had a question. At the paseos entrance, there are eight large columns that used to have a trellis on them, and that was taken down some time ago. It would be nice if we could get that back up. Is there a problem with that, or can we do that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we can give that suggestion to the landscape architect who's going to be leading this effort. Ultimately, the, he'll be working with the Historic Landmarks Commission on the final design and any elements that go in the paseo.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we do that, because they're sitting there looking incomplete, and there's no reason we should leave it that way if we can. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And then item ten, if you could just read the item for ten.
Set a date for public hearing regarding appeal of Planning Commission's March seventeen action to deny the January twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen appeal of staff hearing officer approval for Medical Marijuana Storefront Collective dispensary at one-one-eight North Milpa Street.
Okay. Ms. Antle?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are just correcting the, set the date time from two PM to four PM for this item.
Okay. So as we vote on this, the, we're supposed to say four PM, so we just want to correct that when we vote on the consent calendar. And then item twelve.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's another correct...
Actually, if we could read the item first.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Set a date for public hearing regarding appeal of Architectural Board of Review approval of concept review for new small wireless communications facility located in the public right-of-way on the three-hundred block of Grove Lane.
Ms. Antle?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this also should be corrected to set the date of May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, at two PM. Just date correction.
Okay. All right. Any questions on Mr. Hart?
I just did have a question. The item about the appeal of the...
The item about the appeal of the dispensary, we have a time certain for that? What is, that is not normally-
We, we've done that many times before with appeals, that there was, in terms of helping the public who may want to come, get a better sense of what time to come. So we've done that with other appeals before, and that way we can get the regular business done between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock, and then start the appeal at, at 4:00. So we've done this before.
So if the council business continues past 4:00, we stop to do the-
We can assess that, where, you know, we, we can assess that, and sometimes that's happened with interviews for boards and commissions, and sometimes it's gone a little late. I mean, we try to be flexible, but we try to look, work out the agenda so that people who know about the appeal to come at 4:00 o'clock know to come at 4:00 and not have to wait for two hours.
Okay.
That was the idea behind it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Antle?
One more item of note on item number 12. That would also include resetting the date for the site visit to May 9.
So May 10 for the appeal, and May 9 at 1:30 for the, but we have a site visit May 9, don't we? So how do we do that? We're going to have two, two site visits?
Yeah, well, we can do that, Madam Mayor, or the council can choose which one it needs to go to. I, I don't know whether site visits are essential or valuable for either the, I believe we have the marijuana dispensary appeal, as opposed to this wireless site.
We're being asked to vote on setting a date of site visits at the same time and same date.
Yeah, the, that would mean that would be the gathering time for the start of that meeting, and if the council wanted to proceed them in either order, that would be fine.
Okay, so we're going to both of them, we just will decide which one will be first? Is that what you're saying?
You can, yes. You don't need to specify that now.
Okay.
And you don't need to commit to go to both of them now.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we need a, let me just clarify what the consent calendar motion should be. It's moving the consent minus item two, and then with the correction on item 10 to 4:00 and the correction on item 12 for A at May 10 and B at May 9.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, there's a second? Moved by Maria, second by Hotch, by Dominguez, I don't know why I keep calling you Mr. Hotchkiss today, second by Dominguez. All in favor?
Madam Mayor.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Martenson's concerns and his clients, and at the same time, you know, honor the good work of people's self-help housing. It just seemed like that item went by quite, kind of quick, and I just wanted to acknowledge your concerns.
Okay. And did you vote aye on the consent calendar, just to-
Yeah, that's going to be an aye.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, and thank you for acknowledging that. Okay. All right, so that moves us on to a report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Hart?
Madam Mayor, the council, the Finance Committee considered the investment report for the first quarter of the year, and identified items that it'll be bringing forward to discuss regarding the upcoming fiscal year budget, and also talked about the Streets Fund situation and regards to capital reserves, and will be continuing that conversation, both the budget and the, the situation with the Streets Fund at subsequent Finance Committee meetings.
Great, thank you. Item 16.
Amended Stage 3 drought declaration to 35% conservation target, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 15036, the Stage 3 drought emergency declaration to increase the reduction from normal citywide water use from 25% to 35%.
Thank you, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager. Little different presentation for you today. We are, feel like we've gone through what is, will be our rainy season, and feel like it's time to, to step up the game. And so today's presentation is a little different than our monthly discussions about our water supplies. We will be touching on our drought condition, recapping on that, our current water supply strategy, but then we're going to dive into demand management strategy, looking at phased water use regulations, and also water demand for development projects, and then finishing with our recommendation. So to recap, the state drought was declared in 2014, January 2014. The city moved under voluntary, voluntary reduction in February 2014, subsequently in May, moving to a mandatory reduction of 20%, and then last May declaring a Stage 3 drought declaration with a 25% mandatory reduction. So this year, we finished rainfall for Gibraltar at just over 50% of normal, and a little better at Kachuma, and at 67% for downtown Santa Barbara. Again, we did not see any significant runoff into our local reservoirs. It has not changed or improved our situation and that stance, and we do not anticipate any additional rainfall for the rest of this water year, which ends in September. I have a few pictures here for you. This is the intake tower that diverts water from Lake Kachuma to the south coast, typically by gravity, and currently, this tower is, I believe it's about 100 feet tall, and it sits high and dry right now as we pump water out of the lake to this very critical facility. And then here's almost 180 degrees from that picture, you see the barge. Where I took this picture, I would be under about 70 feet of water if the lake was full, just giving a perspective. This barge is currently in, in the process of being moved to a different location. You could see how close it is right now to the shore. You pretty much could walk out to the barge. And so they're going to be relocating this barge and hopefully have that done by mid-June. So one of the things that we obviously keep tracking with this drought is the severity of it, and just, I think, kind of really drives home, this is 97 years of rainfall records. This is now the driest five years on record, surpassing what was our drought of record, the 1947 to 51, which was the basis of all of our water supply planning. This drought is almost 12 inches drier over that five-year period. It's a significant difference. We would expect during a five-year average to receive 132 inches, and we received 60. Fairly dramatic, and certainly, as we've been talking about, a game changer when it comes to our long-term water supply planning. As much media sensation we heard about El Nino, and it's certainly did bring some welcomed water to Northern California, there's certainly a significant chunk of California that is still under the, the blanket of the drought, and we are in the heart of that area, unfortunately. And I'll be talking a little bit more about how Northern California's rainfall has changed the, changed the field. Included this graphic, this is, shows the city's water usage going back to 1985, and one of the things I wanted to kind of point out is, here was the last drought that we went through, and for those who were around, it was a pretty significant drought for this area, certainly not as drastic as this drought, but we were, I would just say, we weren't as prepared, and we had an outdoor watering moratorium, we had stopped all development, and we're currently almost to that point. And this is a community that has modestly added about 5,000 residents to our community since the last drought, and yet our water usage is already down to that same level, but we've done it through pretty much voluntary means to the community. Our current regulations are pretty light. Certainly, there's a lot of regulations out there we could be doing, but this just speaks volumes, I think, to where this community's mindset has been about conservation and taking responsibility. And, you know, my favorite part in talking with people in the community is everybody is approaching this in a different way. Some people have forego showers because they want to water precious landscapes, some have let the landscaping go because they have certain other things they want to keep. And so everyone is making those trade-offs, and I think that's what's been helpful and positive, if there's a highlight to this drought, is that everyone is doing, doing their part in their own way, and it's, as a community, we are achieving significant progress. And really, today is all about recognizing that progress and just raising our target to match what the community is already doing. So our water supply strategy, just wanted to refresh where we are. We are in year five, 2016. We do have adequate supplies to get us through this year, and we have planned supplies to get us through next year. D-SAL is going to play a very significant role in making sure this community has adequate water, as you can see here. And then we are planning already for what would happen in 2018, and we have identified a shortage, and we feel in the last couple weeks, we have secured adequate supplies now to fulfill that shortage. The question then becomes making sure we can get that water here, and I'll talk a little bit about the conveyance challenges ahead. Conservation, 40% reduction for the month of March, it's just really impressive, and again, another positive sign in the community that we've, we've got the message. Our cumulative average now is 34% savings since declaring a Stage 3 last May. I think this is fantastic, given very light regulations we have in play right now. So our water supply strategy moving forward has been to ensure adequate supplies to meet demands through 2018, and the key to that is, that really is the planning horizon we feel is necessary to delay the D-SAL decision for any type of expansion for another year. The tools that we are using is there's supply management, which is our imported water, and then demand management, which is our conservation efforts. So just a little bit of information about our supplemental water purchase that we're wrapping up right now. But before I get into that, let's talk about the conveyance limitation. I'm going to dive more into this in May when we come back again, but the state water system has been a very valuable asset. We have been taking full advantage of it during this drought, and we have imported over a year's worth of water to this community, but it does have a limitation as to how much water we can bring in. You know, Northern California received significant rainfall, we could buy more water, but we can't get it here. So we do have those limitations, and we're, we're bumping up against significant evaporate, evaporation when water is introduced into Kachuma now, that that, that water gets, in essence, taxed with the entire evaporation of the lake, and so it, it's getting very challenging wrestling with, you know, we have this significant amount of water, how do we get it here? And certainly, if others aren't taking advantage of that capacity in the pipeline, we're, we're there and, and ready to step up and do that. But, so the, the current proposal that we're purchased that we're working with is a, again, it's a, almost a lease, but I think a more favorable lease this time around, but it's 4,000 acre-feet of water, $250 an acre-foot, roughly a million dollars for that, two-to-one return water. For every two acre-feet we borrow, we have to return one, which has been a better deal than we've seen in the past, which is more, but on a one-to-one. We have to return that water in 10 years. This brings our water debt up to about seven, a little over 7,000 acre-feet of water that we need to return, which is over a year's, a half a year's worth of city water. So it's a pretty significant debt that we've incurred, and, and we're going to have to be focused on how to find water, buying it, and returning it to, to AVEC. This water is already south of the Delta, so isn't subject to conveyance losses, and we feel fairly confident about the ability to deliver it. On the demand management side of it, we are recommending increasing the target to 35%. Again, this is matching the current community conservation efforts. This isn't asking really for more, this is asking for more of, I guess, the same. It represents approximately 5,000 acre-feet of savings annually. Keep that in mind, because we're going to be going through several different options that, that we did look at, and, but this, this is a significant savings right off the bat, and we are not recommending additional regulations at this time. So what triggers additional regulations? Certainly interruptions in supplies. If we were to lose an enormous amount of wells, or to go out, there were to be some interruption coming from Kachuma, some state water interruption, that would obviously trigger us moving forward with additional regulations. Also, the shortages, as I mentioned, the conveyance capacity limitation, it's going to, it's going to get close this summer with demands, demands peaking in July, August, and September, being able to import and deliver enough water. We're going to be watching that closely and keeping the council up to speed on this, but we're hopeful that we can get through this summer without implementing any short-term reductions. State regulations, current conservation standards for the city are 12%. Certainly, we're far above that, and the state right now is not contemplating any new regulations, and I'd have to just comment on the fact that it was, it was, in one way, it was nice having a state that was united behind the drought, and now we have basically two different states, the haves and the have-nots, and so it's, it's kind of made the, the dialogue at the state level a little more interesting and challenging, I think, because there are, there are communities and agencies that have plenty of water now. So potential water use regulations, we did provide this information last year and went over it, this kind of refreshed it, and basically, there's, we see three different levels, and again, within these levels, there's varying degrees of what we can do, but prohibiting watering of lawns, with exceptions, potentially to schools, venues, commercial venues where it's important to their commerce, but rough estimates, at this point, given the conservation we've already seen from the community, we think we could eke out another 600 to 1,000 acre-feet of savings annually if we moved, if we had implemented a prohibition on that. Prohibiting outdoor water use except for hand-watering of trees and shrubs, somewhere between 1,200 and 1,600 acre-feet of savings, and then prohibiting, prohibiting all outdoor water use, somewhere between 16 and 2,000 acre-feet of savings is what we anticipate we would see. Again, all of this comes with significant staffing and regulations and enforcement, and at this time, we don't believe that is necessary. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Ms. DeBusk to walk through the development and the impacts of those developments.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Allison DeBusk, and I'm a planner in the Community Development Department, and as Mr. Hagmark said, I'm going to be talking about potential development regulate or restrictions that we've talked about in the past, as well as the demand generated by development. We have heard concerns from the community about continued development during this extreme drought, and so we wanted to give you some current information and updated statistics compared to what we presented last year. So first, to give you an overview of how much water we're talking about when we talk about development restrictions. The city's general plan estimates that we will have approximately 40 acre-feet per year of new water demand from development, and that's based on the policies and land uses identified over the 20-year planning period of the general plan. We also looked at the certificates of occupancy that have been granted for development projects from 2004 through 2013, and that averaged to 28 acre-feet per year. There are big fluctuations each year, but we do think that that's a realistic average. And then to confirm those numbers, we looked at occupancies that have been granted in 2014, and found that 38.54 acre-feet per year went online, and then in 2015, 9.74 acre-feet went online. And so as I said, this is typical of the unpredictable yearly fluctuations that we have, but it is still in line with the 10-year average of 28 acre-feet per year. So using those estimates of 28 to 40 acre-feet per year, that represents .29 to .41% of the city's drought water supply. And in doing these calculations, the drought water demand that we used was 9,800 acre-feet per year. So the primary development restrictions that we've talked about in the past include a deferral of landscaping for development projects, whether that be voluntary or mandatory, suspension of building permits for new pools, and a suspension of building permits for projects with net new water demand. So starting with a landscape deferral, staff estimates that the savings from a landscape deferral would be approximately 4.44 acre-feet per year. And just for the record, a lot of assumptions went into determining how much water savings we would get from this assumption, or from a landscape deferral. And in doing these calculations, we were only calculating purely aesthetic landscaping. So we're still assuming that the landscaping that's required as part of a project's compliance was stormwater management, any environmental restoration or mitigation that's required, and also landscaping required for erosion control, that that type of land- and also landscaping required for erosion control, that that type of landscaping would still be allowed due to environmental concerns. So 4.44 acre feet per year equals .05% of the city's annual drought water supply. Another potential option for reducing water demand would be a ban on permits for new pools. The city issues approximately 14 pool permits every year. And with the initial filling and then the annual maintenance, we estimate that that results in 1.2 acre feet per year of new water demand, which is .01% of the city's drought water supply. And another more significant tool for reducing new water demand would be to suspend the issuance of building permits for projects that result in net new water demand. So this would be generally projects that have new residential units or new non-residential square footage. It would not include additions to existing residential units. So looking at the big picture, we have approximately 69.64 acre feet per year of approved projects. We have 97.5 acre feet per year of pending development. And so that totals 167.14 acre feet per year of potential water demand in the pipeline. This equals 1.75% of the drought water supply. So as you can, oops, sorry. As you can see on this table, we've included numbers from 2014 and 2015. And you can see that generally the numbers are trending upward. We have about 33 acre feet per year more in the pipeline right now than we did at this time last year. And I also want to be clear that this represents kind of the worst-case scenario. This is everything that we have in the planning department right now. So we wouldn't expect all of this to come online within the next year or two years. It's just to give you the magnitude of all the development that's potential citywide. As I had mentioned previously, we expect more like 28 to 40 acre feet per year to be the annual increase.
We have a couple of questions, Mr. Dominguez and Mr. White.
Thank you. There, Santa Barbara doesn't have vacant land and probably doesn't have land that's void of using water either. So is this net increase in water use or is this gross water use and that there was past use that's not accounted for?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, this is net new water use. And it's also, it's not compared to actual use on the site. It's compared to the water demand that would be on the site based on the city's water demand factors. So we didn't want to penalize properties that were perhaps using less than the typical demand or incentivize using more water on your site to bump up your existing water use. So it's across the board using the city's water demand factors.
Mr. Dominguez?
So this slide covers 2014 and 2015, and we're in 2016. Does this mean you have good news about projected rainfall for next year?
So actually, I should correct that. This is through March 1st, 2016. So that's when we pulled all the statistics together.
And so the total for 2015 residential, that includes residential that was issued in certificate in calendar year 2015?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, this is projects that are in the pipeline that have not been issued building permits. So they're projects that are either pending, they haven't received any design review or other approvals, or the top row shows projects that have been approved. They've gotten their design review approval or their planning commission approval, whatever it may be. And so just to clarify, the numbers are not cumulative. You know, for example, residential in 2014, we had 29.2 acre feet that had been approved.
So I guess what I'm not understanding is so 2014, no building permit issued?
Correct. What that means is we have not issued a building permit. So there's, they still have that approved status until they receive a building permit, at which point it goes into a different category.
So what was approved, the conceptual?
The project itself was approved by either the planning commission or the design review board.
And then they didn't pull permits?
Correct. They have not pulled permits yet.
And then buildings that were actually built in 2014 or 2015, those would not be on this slide. Those are already out of the pipeline.
That's correct. And the next slide, we'll actually get into that a little bit.
So what isn't the pipeline? You mentioned that the 2015 numbers are much bigger than 2014 and are the 2016 numbers with the AUD much bigger than that?
So Councilmember Dominguez, these are numbers through March 1st, 2016, and I can't predict what they're going to be for the rest of the year. You know, we have had a few more applications come in, in the month of April and that are not on this chart. But, you know, as I said, the numbers are trending upward, but we can't predict, you know, exactly what's going to walk in the door tomorrow.
So I'm sorry, so you're including projects that came in January and February of 2016?
That's correct.
They're just lumped in with the 2015?
That's correct.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rouse, these numbers are all potable water and they include landscaping as well as other uses?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, that is correct. It includes all water use for the project.
So if you, if you had, I mean, this is obviously not a significant amount of water in the total scope of things, but if you had to break it down or do a deferred landscaping for the pending projects, you could have a different number.
Councilmember Rouse, that is correct. We use a figure of approximately 50% as the amount of lands, water that goes towards landscaping for a project.
And in some of, and I don't know that this is possible, but like in some of the larger pending hotel projects, for example, is non-potable available in terms of their landscaping use to them from our system?
Councilmember Rouse, it depends on their location. The larger projects, if, for example, the waterfront hotel, I believe that does have recycled water available to it for landscaping. But some of the other hotel projects are outside of the area of recycled water.
Thank you.
Okay, keep going.
Thank you. So this slide identifies the amount of water demand based on building permits that have been issued. And so that's all permits that have been issued until March 1st, and that's 75.32 acre feet per year. And so these are permits that have already been issued and so restriction on development would not affect this water demand.
Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
I'm sorry, can you give me the time span there again, please?
So that is actually, it's everything from, going back to 1990 until March 1st, 2016. So there are some anomalies on that list of building permits issued. Some projects may have actually been occupied and they never called for their final inspection. So there's a couple of projects like that still hanging out there that might be older. But in general, these are projects that are still under construction.
So Entrada would be part of that?
That is correct.
So the slide previously showed 72 acre feet in 2014 and 67 in 2015. So the 75.32 number, that's just an annual number? That's not cumulative?
Councilmember Dominguez, that is actually cumulative of all building permits that have been issued but have not yet received occupancy.
So then, I'm not sure then I understand the 72 and the 67 on the slide before, because you obviously can't add those and get 75. So we're using a different system here?
Councilmember Dominguez, this slide does not include building permits that have been issued. So the slide that had, I think the 72 and 67 that you're referring to?
Don't work.
No, I think it's the two prior. I believe you're, oh, no, one more.
Let me come at it a different way then. So the 75 acre feet from 1990 to 2016 is just slightly more than the acre footage we're going to get just from the 2014 projects?
Councilmember Dominguez, that is correct if you want to, yeah, look at it that way.
So 26 years worth of construction is about the same as one year of construction?
No.
In terms of the water required by those developments?
So we, on average, we issue 28 acre feet per year of new water from development projects. The 75 of building permits that have been issued, those are permits that have been issued, you know, primarily over the last three years. You know, there are some older ones. But in general, it's projects that have been issued recently but are still under construction. So it's not necessarily true that this 75 acre feet per year will all go online this year. Some will be completed and will go online. Some will continue construction into next year and will be part of, you know, the next year's statistic on certificates of occupancy.
Okay, I think I understand. So this is, when you say 1990, that's something could have been issued a permit, but for whatever reason, they sat on it for a couple of decades.
That's correct.
So it's not just all construction. Got it. Thank you.
If you'd like to speak, you can spill out a public comment speaker slip and I'll call you up. So please continue.
Okay, so in sum, looking at all the issued, approved and pending projects, we have a total of 242.46 acre feet per year of new water demand, which is approximately 2.5% of the city's drought water supply. So at this time, based on, you know, prior council direction, staff is not recommending instituting new development restrictions. During the last significant drought in the late 80s, we did implement some development restrictions. And I think it's helpful to compare the current situation to the drought at that time. So as you can see in this table, during the last drought, we had over 600 acre feet of new development in the pipeline, whereas currently we have 167 acre feet, which is significantly less. Also, at that time, the city as a whole was using 16,226 acre feet per year of water. And currently, the city is using about 14,600 acre feet per year. And that's our pre-drought number. As you know, the city is currently using significantly less than that, but that's our pre-drought average. So in summary, staff does not know estimated water savings from a voluntary landscape deferral, but it would be less than a mandatory landscape deferral. From a mandatory landscape deferral, we would anticipate about 4.4 acre feet per year of water savings. A suspension of permits for new pools would be approximately 1.2 acre feet per year in savings. And a suspension of permits for new development would be approximately 28 to 40 acre feet per year of water savings. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question, if I could. What is our acre footage use now, about 11.5?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it's about 9,800 acre feet a year.
Thank you. I'm glad I understood.
So in summary, our water supply situation is not improved. We certainly are in unprecedented drought conditions. We are continuing to work to secure and preserve water supplies and promote extraordinary water conservation. And we believe increasing the citywide demand reduction target to 35%, matching current community conservation is necessary. Our recommendation is to adopt a resolution, amending Resolution 15036, the Stage Three Drought and Emergency Declaration, to increase the conservation target from 25 to 35% of the 2013 water use. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Why don't we go to public comment? Frank Dupont, why don't you come on up? Mr. Dupont, and then Mark Kirkhart. And you have two minutes, two minutes here at the podium.
Could be kind of simple. I'm just curious, do the people like the university and the people in the Guelph Valley areas toward Costco, do they have to go through the same committee to get the building permits? And how long ago did some of those people probably get those permits authorized?
Great. Well, we'll ask that question right after public comment. Great. Thank you. Mr. Kirkhart?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Mark Kirkhart, founder of Design Architects. I've been in business here for 40 years in the city of Santa Barbara this year. I employ 20 people in my business right now. And I'm actually here, not just speaking for my own self-interest, but actually for all of my clients, all the other architects and everyone else in the building community in this, in this city, and also the trickle-down effect that that building, of building community has on the, on the city. And I would just urge you to support the staff's recommendation to not impose any new restrictions. I'd also would quote that many of you knew my deceased partner, Bruce Bartlett, who had, I called him the person that probably had more common sense than anyone I knew, sat on the planning commission for eight years, as you know, with some of you guys. And he, his point was that why would you want to stop development, restrict development? Because those projects are going to be the projects that will have the most water-wise development standards when they're built. So they will be the most water-conserving projects in the, in the city. So, you know, please don't take those away from us. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Perhaps, Mr. Hagmark, if you could answer the gentleman's question about what the process is, as much as you, oh, did you want, I thought you wanted to talk about Montecito water, which is the next item. But is that right? Yeah.
Thank you.
I got you, right. You'll be first, I promise. I promise. Mr. Hagmark, can you maybe explain as much as possible about, I guess it sounded like UCSB in the Guelph area and out in there, about what their process is about new development and water?
Yes, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the Guelph Water District and the city of Guelph certainly have a, they have a lot more development going on than we do here, but they have issued a moratorium on no new meters. But they still have a lot of projects that are moving forward that already had approval. They have a completely different water supply situation than the city does. And so, but there is a process, a public process that each one of those projects goes through. And that discussion, I know they're, they're having many discussions at the Guelph Water District and city, city council down there. So there's opportunities to weigh in on that.
And I think the other complication there is there's two different elected bodies dealing with connected items. You have the Guelph Water District and then you have the city council that deals with development. And so we are the same body up here when, for both items. So that might make things easier or more difficult. I don't know, but it is, it's different, so.
It is different. And they have, as Councilmember White said, they have a lot of open space where we have a lot of actually, it is redevelopment. And certainly there are projects in the city that are planning to, you know, redo their, whether it's tearing down and putting new and actually using less water in the end. I mean, there are, there are projects that have that. Not every new project is actually increasing its water usage.
Great, thanks. So I hope that answers that question. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Mr. Hagmark, I've heard this number and it was, it just kind of blew me away, but I know you, you have it in your head. And that is how much water that the city has to import. And our concern is a summer away from now. The summer of 2017 is where our dear staff is looking over the horizon to, obviously, and in the fear that we've, and covering the possibility that we don't get any rain next year either. And that's really the kind of planning that our staff is doing. But we have to import some crazy amount of water in order to have a gallon of water, we have to, several gallons of water we have to import in order to have one gallon available a year from August or something like that. Can you go over that statistic for us, please?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we've been talking about the implications of how evaporation is accounted for in Kachuma. And again, it's still a lively discussion that we continue to have with the Bureau. It hasn't been completely settled. But we've made some assumptions on how that could trickle down for us. And basically, the way that this discussion is going is there's this, you know, the remaining water in the lake and there are downstream users that have water in the lake. It doesn't evaporate per their contract. And then there's the minimum pool, which doesn't evaporate. So what it does is it leaves, any remaining water, which is water that we might import into that lake, has to take the entire evaporation for the lake. And so that's where we've, staff has been concerned and focused on it. And one of the things that we're looking at is next summer, typically you have your runner, run-up of summer water demand. Going into next summer, we need to have built up a roughly 500 to 700 acre foot surplus in the lake. And in order to build up that surplus of water in the lake so that we can get through next summer, we expect to have about 1,200 acre feet of evaporation on that 700 acre feet of water. So it's almost a 60% tax on bringing water and storing water in the lake. And so certainly that has us very concerned and we're hoping we can work something out that's a little more equitable about how evaporation is treated on the lake. But that has us concerned about being able to meet demands. We have plenty of water. It's just a matter of... We have plenty of water, it's just a matter of the limitations on getting it here. We are, we are working with the Central Coast Water Authority, who manages the state water imports, on trying to accelerate deliveries so that we can get more water to the lake and hopefully be able to buffer next year, but we still haven't ironed out a plan to do that.
Well, and Madam Mayor, just, that's the kind of planning that our staff is doing, and the obstacles and challenges that they have to deal with. And yet, that's the planning that's going on, is for next summer, worst-case scenario. And it's a daunting one, and I really appreciate staff taking that on and collaborating with this variety of organizations, all with competing interests and very smart attorneys on their teams, trying to make this work. And my second question is with the reclaimed water system. Can you give us an update of how we're doing there? Are we making any progress on getting that productivity up?
We have been working to bring a special filter consultant on to help us, and he's very optimistic that he can boost production. We have seen in the last week or two, we've been getting up closer to a million gallons a day. Previously, we were kind of stuck at 700,000. We really, the key for us is to get up around 1.5 million to be able to meet demands this summer. I don't want to be too optimistic on this, because everything else has been so drab in this drought, but the consultant seems confident that we can tweak the system and try and get some more production, and at this point, we don't know what that's going to be. We're also planning to use the Valverde well, which is a non-potable well, and put that into the system. At this point, we are, we are thinking the shortage, the need for putting potable water in the system is somewhere around 200, 250 acre-feet to kind of take those peaking demand off. Still, it's still, compared to the overall recycled water use, I mean, it's still a big difference from last year, and it's still, majority of it is recycled.
So, and thank you for that. Just, there's a comment that perhaps Ms. Maria and I would make later, but we had an orientation meeting with the CCWA staff, which was fascinating, but the piece that I think is important for this moment is that they are working on re-engineering and looking more closely at our importation system with the hope that we can increase that capacity by 18%. By, I use the term hotter, using hotter pumps, I mean, it's just, it's having mechanical changes. We can't get a bigger pipeline in, in that timeframe, but they're looking at ways to increase the ability to get water into Kachuma Lake. And obviously, an 18% increase, if we can get anywhere near that, is going to be over the next year to 18 months, could make a real difference in our supply. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hacchus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I may be reiterating what Mr. White just asked, I'm not sure, but when you say problems of getting the water here, are those legal problems or physical problems?
Those would be, sorry, those would be physical problems.
And what are our choices?
Well, one of the options that's out there is if other water agencies are not utilizing their full capacity in the pipeline, it automatically gets divvied up to those who want to take advantage of that. So we have been taking advantage. We've been delivering more water than we have, we have legal capacity for, utilizing others, because, for example, Carpinteria has not been making significant state water deliveries, nor has the Montecito Water District. So we've been taking advantage of that excess capacity to deliver more water for the city.
And is now the right time to ask you what difference the, as you said, that we have two states instead of one, and now regarding water supply, has the, what do I want to say, the rain, et cetera, in Northern California, is that affecting us in any way? Or is that going to be helpful, or are they, I'm not sure where we go here?
Councilmember Hacchus, I think it's gone a long ways to drive down the price. It's kind of the general terms of that water purchase, that was a very favorable water purchase. Really, the price per unit was what you'd see almost in non-drought times. I mean, the $250 an acre foot is...
That's good news.
Is really a good price. So we felt, we felt like it was, the market is much better. I'll just say that. The market for buying water is much better. And yeah, so now, the next critical path is running through the conveyance system.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just more curiosity, Mr. Hagmark, about the supply management, the purchased water from Antelope Valley, and we have to return one acre-foot for every two acre-feet purchased. What's the default position on that? If there's not physical water to return, is there a financial component to that? Is there something in the contract that says, if you don't return the water, it'll cost you X?
Those terms aren't in there, but certainly, it would end up in mitigation, or some type of legal dispute, but our current approach would be to pick up, hopefully, rice water from Northern California and utilize that to make that return. That's our current thinking on that, but as I mentioned, it's quite, at 7,000 acre-feet, it's quite a debt to be carrying.
Not an antelope fee, then, that's been predetermined?
No.
Okay, very good.
And that's, just to clarify, this return water is an interesting component of the state water system. They, DWR put this in the contract, but I mean, you talk to AVEC, they really don't need the return water. They're a community that, in the 60s, they thought was going to be the next LA, and so it ended up with a massive Table A state allocation, which they use only a portion of, and so they're just trying to recoup some of their costs. They don't need this, necessarily need this water back, but DWR requires there be a return component, and that's something that we're looking with the renewal of the contract, is that really still necessary? Do we still need to have this return component? Because it does set up a very interesting dynamic in the future.
Sounds like Roy Rogers was an influential man in his time. I just want to say that I think the way staff has put together the report does give credit to the public where credit is due. The public has done a fabulous job, absent punitive measures, which I had faith in from the get-go, and they've certainly performed. The messaging going forward, which has been good so far, is going to have to really include that entire concept, because, you know, people do ask, well, we did 25% of rates, they're still going up, what happened to D-Sell? Now you're asking for 35. So in a nutshell, when you say a 35% target, and as opposed to a ceiling or floor or a threat, is there a way to really put that out to the public that says, you're doing it already, we want to continue doing this, we don't want to do this by cutting, and as staff adequately pointed out along with Mr. Kirkhart, these new developments are, number one, an insignificant amount of water in the big picture, and number two, is likely more efficient and better serving for the community than the old projects would have been. I suppose, you know, other than just the reports on these council meetings, there's got to be some kind of a, an editorial or some kind of description going forward that lets people know we're doing the right things, please continue. I know staff has been good at it so far. Have you guys considered that at all, or?
Certainly, we're definitely working on the messaging, because I think a lot of people are seeing this increase in the target and saying, oh, you want us to do more? And I'm like, I want you to keep doing what you're doing. Whatever you're doing, it's working, keep doing it. We're achieving the goal, we're just increasing our target to match what the community is already doing. That's what we're doing here, not raising the bar and making, asking more of our community, just asking them to continue that same pace.
Yeah, because I think typically, people expect the governmental agencies to use the hammer, as opposed to, you know, carrot going forward. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. If that messaging can go forward in a real cohesive way, I think that'd be really important. And certainly, I don't know about you guys, but I get a lot of questions about that very thing, is like, what more can we do? And like you said, keep doing what you're doing, so.
Mr. Dominguez?
I want to follow up on a comment about newer developments using less water, and it kind of makes me think about when I'm out with my friends and family, and you walk by a store that says 75% off. And so certainly, the marginal cost, if I were to buy another jacket, it's going to be a lot cheaper than the jacket I bought that I only paid 50% off for, but what's even cheaper is not buying another jacket. And adding in more houses, as efficient as they can be, is still going to increase our water usage. I think there's a great benefit. I want to highlight, I want to certainly encourage that, but I also want to highlight how much we can save by retrofitting some of our older hardware. And I know there's a lot of people, particularly in older houses, and some of our residents who are most afflicted by economic conditions and environmental conditions, who are really doing well by cutting back on showers, cutting back on how often they flush, cutting back on their gardening. So there's certainly, and this goes along with some of the complimentary comments that my comments have made and staff have made about our city really doing well. I think people in these older buildings are really doing well, cutting back by changing their habits and by sacrificing. It would be great if they could move into newer buildings or retrofit their buildings, and I hope we're doing as much as we can as a city to encourage that, because I think that's really where gains can be made, and if you're looking at the bottom line, it's not just adjusting one of the two feeders into that bottom line, but it really ekes out true gains. Going back to the slides for the cumulative potential water demand that ends up with the 242 acre-feet and the 2.5%, I was curious if we had a number of how many units, when we were doing the accounting, about how many units that represents of development?
Well, Mr. Busk, look, so I wanted to kind of add another tidbit of information related to the general plan and our water supply planning. With the potential of 800 acre-feet of new demand coming online, based on improvements, again, in landscaping and interior fixture counts, changes, or fixture efficiency, we actually, the general plan has us ending in 2035 with less water use than we did going into this drought. Like, we make quite a bit of headway every year with just changing out of dishwashers, changing out of washers, and we do have a model that we have, a water conservation model, that helps us determine how much money to spend on different programs, and that model predicts somewhere between 120 acre-feet a year of savings, just based on the current changes in fixtures, changes in appliances. And so you've got to keep that in mind when we talk about 40 acre-feet of new demand and 120 acre-feet of efficiency that we capture, and so it's still a net reduction at the end of the year in water usage.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, we have 231 units that are under construction, so that would be the building permit issued category. We have 391 units that have been approved, and 686 units that are pending. So the numbers up on the screen, however, also include non-residential development, so those are just the housing numbers.
I'm sorry, and can you go back to the slide and show me where those numbers fit in, just so when I go back and look at this later, I don't scratch my hair? So go back to the pipeline projects, maybe, the 2014, 15. So where would the 231 number go?
So it would actually go on that slide we were just on. The 231 number would go with the 75.32 acre-feet per year, the first row that says building permit issued.
Okay.
391 would go with the second row, the 69.64 acre-feet, and 686 would go with the 97.5 acre-feet. But as I said, the water demand numbers also include non-residential development.
And I'm sorry, what was the last number?
686 units are pending, and we have 97.5 acre-feet of water pending.
And then you said, non-residential, or what did?
So the numbers on the screen, the acre-feet per year, you can't strictly divide them by the number of units in the pipeline, because the water demand on the screen also includes non-residential development components of projects.
Okay. And it's interesting, because some of these, even the biggest number, 686 correlates to 97 acre-feet, and 231 correlates to 75. So you have more than twice as many units, but only about 20% more water usage.
And Councilmember Dominguez, that is likely because there's a lot of non-residential development in the pipeline, some bigger projects, hotel projects that were mentioned previously, other types of development.
And the 2.5% of annual drought water supply, and that's what I was trying to think about in terms of how many more units are we adding into the system? Are we adding in 2% more units, habitable units, or? And if this does continue for the next three or four years, then we're going to hit 5% of annual supply, and my thinking is if we're going to add in 5%, and the AUD is definitely giving us some gangbuster numbers, and that may taper off, if we have 10% of our annual drought water supply from this new development and add it into something like, say, 5% conservation efforts, that's 10%. So that's a pretty big chunk of water. That's a pretty big source of water. And going back to your sources of water slide, the projected supply strategy, 10% is really a big number then to deal with. So that's all I wanted to point out, or make sure I was, I have my numbers all straight at this point.
Okay, we do need a motion for this item.
I would make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, removing the staff recommendation? Okay, by White, and second by Rouse. All in favor? Aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then we'll get on to item 17, and certainly, Mr. Mayo's public comment, I can hardly wait. Almost, almost, almost. If you can read item number 17.
Montecito Water District Desalination Water Sales Agreement Status Update.
Thank you, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, and here to provide an update on the status of discussions with the Montecito Water District. The ad hoc committee felt it was time, we've been silent for a while, to bring this back and make sure that the full council and the public understood what was happening. We do have members of the Montecito Water District here today that would like to speak when I'm done. So background, Montecito was a partner in the facility, when the facility was originally built, and in 1992, following the last drought, Montecito decided that they were going to pursue state water instead of D-Sell, and so they discontinued their partnership. In June of 2015, Montecito made a request for regional use of the city's D-Sell plant, and in September of 2015, city council authorized staff to initiate discussions. In October, staff presented a draft term sheet, and again, this is just a basic outline, a basic framework, it does not get into great detail, was presented to Montecito. We did receive a response in December. At the time, Montecito was proposing a different arrangement that did not work for the city, and in February, Montecito requested that we wanted to pick up those discussions again. And in April, we, I would say, we have general alignment on just basic terms, and I'm going to get into those basic terms, but we're talking about the length of time for this water sales agreement and the capacity that we're, or volume of water, is really where we are at. There's still a lot of work to be done. But the terms of the agreement right now, as laid out, is about 20 years with the option to renew. It is 1,250 acre-feet of water, and it isn't plus or minus, it's 1,250 acre-feet. It's a take-or-pay. The water source is at the city's discretion, so we choose the source of that 1,250 acre-feet, but the cost will be attributed to the cost of D-Sell. The schedule to make delivery of that water is two years, and the challenge with it, we have, we have a, an estimate from IDE that we can do the treatment side in about a year, but the conveyance pipeline needed to get that water up to Montecito, we have some concerns that the environmental and other things may take, may take a little longer, and so that's why we believe it's, it could be up to a two-year, two years to make that happen. And then the point of delivery would be the South Coast Condo, and that was desirable because it basically is the backbone in which we get all of our state water imports and Kachuma water. So it makes conveyance, basically, they would be getting the water as they normally get water conveyed to them. So the water supply development charge is, in essence, based on the city's cost to reactivate the facility at 3125, and so they'd be picking up 40% of the cost that we've already committed to at this point, which is roughly 55 million. There are some exceptions to that, which I can get into, but for the, for rough, that's where the cost is. That would work out to approximately 20 million would be that initial buy-in cost for that capacity. Then the conveyance facility, Montecito would need to fund 100% of the costs associated with that conveyance pipeline. The city would... The city would, however, participate in the incremental cost of making sure that that pipeline was sized appropriately, that in the future, should we need it, that pipeline could be utilized. But at this time, we have no plans to utilize that facility. And then the fixed treatment plant, O and M costs, those would be a fixed annual cost, take or pay, so whether they wanted any water or not, that would be a fixed cost that they would be picking up. It's very similar to what the city already has. We have a standby cost that we would pay whether we had any water or not. And then the variable volumetric charge, it's based on their proportionate share of production, and those are basically the terms of the agreement as it stands right now. The next steps are a reimbursement agreement. We feel like at this point, we've kind of, the next big move is getting a financial commitment from Montecito to participate in costs to help us negotiate with IDE. We feel like we have a cost for the facility to be expanded to 7,500, but we don't have a cost to expand it to 4,375 acre feet, which would be that 1,250 acre foot addition. And so we need to sit down and negotiate that. That will affect the operating costs, and so we need some technical support to do that, along with starting the preliminary design for the pipeline so that we can better understand the permitting timeline and the construction impacts. And we are proposing at this time to use Corolla. I just want to mention that because we have been using Corolla a lot on projects, but they are poised to assist and move quickly on this, and bringing someone else online is going to take a lot of time. The real money in this is going to be the design. We are preparing to do a design-build contract, so Corolla would be helping us basically write a performance specification that we could put out to bid to a contractor to design and construct this pipeline. We are proposing that approach for, to enable to meet Montecito's critical time need. And I kind of added some time on this. We're thinking May-June to bring back that reimbursement agreement and that commitment because Montecito needs to make sure that they can financially, you know, cover that reimbursement. So we'll be working closely with them on that agreement. And then the water sales agreement, right now, just the staff-to-staff discussion is to push to try and bring this finished negotiations by September-October timeframe, and then bring that back to the full City Council and to the Montecito Board for direction and input. And that ends my presentation.
Why don't we hear from the public, and then we can bring it back here? So, Mr. Mayo, thank you for your patience, but it's in context now, whatever you're going to say, so.
It's been fascinating. I'm intrigued by it all. And I even have that little thing from DMV where I gave my blood, and it's all automatic now at DMV. You can't lose a sticker anymore. Madam Mayor, City Council, as just, this is a great report. We learned how Montecito dropped out of the desal plant and the permits in the past, and I just think there's a few things to consider, that they're back now, and they want your water, and your board was smart in that you kept that permit alive for so many years. So that was a wonderful thing. So my feeling is I have three things to think about here. Montecito wants to spend 40 percent to get back in on the water while ignoring all the permits for the last 20 years. I think they should pay the whole bill. They should pay the $55 million, and because they ignored and walked away from the last permit, or we know, they can wait eight years, get their permits, and spend $80 million, and that's if they could get everything up and running. It's just, thank God you guys kept that permit alive, and now it's coming home to roost. And I don't, I think 20 million is sort of like, we'll stick the rest with Santa Barbara. I just feel like, well, Montecito, if you want back in, foot the bill now. Now's the time to step up, you know, to the plate. I think there should be a pool tax on Montecito of $10,000 a year on a pool. It's a luxury item now. And to have this machine of ours that we're building, working overtime to fill a pool, is sort of disgraceful. And I think that we really should consider a $10,000-an-acre-foot sales price of water. This $250-an-acre-foot is just history. It's going to be very, very expensive. Thank you very much. I love all your work.
Charles Newman, and then Dick Shakowitz, or however you want to, Mr. Shakowitz? Sure, absolutely. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Dick Shakowitz. I'm president of the Board of the Montecito Water District. The Montecito Water District and the city since 1921 have had a close working relationship resulting in many successful related projects. I want to acknowledge the City Council's decision in exploring the use of your desal facility as a potential, or as a possible regional entity. I was here when you all voted for it, and we thank you very much. I also wish to extend our appreciation to your two city staff members, who our staff have worked closely with, and that is Rebecca Bjork and Joshua. They've spent, I know how busy they are, and they've spent time with our staff in trying to see if something could be worked out that would make sense for both sides. Our water agencies primarily, ours primarily rely on surface water, just as yours does. We really parallel each other to a large extent, except that yours is a much larger situation. When you need water, we need water usually, and vice versa. When there's plenty of water, we both have plenty of water. We have a strong interest in working with you to, on a purchase agreement, and hopefully we can come to an agreement and an understanding on this. Our district was formed in 1921, and it's my understanding that before any of us were here, your district, your city sold Montecito out of Gibraltar, their first water purchase, and that came in the early 1920s. In March of 1928, you had property near the Upper Santinaz River, which was transferred to Montecito where our Jamison Lake was built, and the Hoonkal Dam was put up. Your council members who negotiated that were wise enough that they put in a provision that besides whatever compensation was paid, Montecito was to return 300 acre feet of water to you every year. For the past 85 years, Montecito has returned some 300 acre feet of water to you, and that comes to, I think, over 25,000 acre feet. And with the numbers I've heard thrown around on the cost of water, hindsight's wonderful, but under today's cost, that's somewhere in the range of $60 to $65 million worth of water. So you had a very wise board at that time. Both districts have worked well together in helping each other. We've had mutual agreements on many things. The Cater Treatment Plant is an example. When Lake Kachuma was put in before I was here, and that, I think, opened up in about 1960, and it, who was ever around at that time, decided it didn't make sense for the city to have a water purification plant, and Montecito to have one, and Carpinteria to have one. So the decision was made with a joint powers agreement that Montecito and Carpinteria would participate in yours. Since that time, we, Montecito, have paid 20 percent of the fixed plant costs of the Cater Treatment Plant, plus so much for the treatment of water. Several years, I mean, an example of this is several years ago, one of the governmental bodies decided that to better purify the water, we needed an ozone plant, and they mandated that you put in an ozone plant, which cost $20 million. Our share of that was $4 million. So we've had a good working relationship all the way through. We've had agreements back and forth to help each other. There are certain customers of ours that we can't serve, and certain customers of yours that you can't serve without a huge expense of money. And year by year, and this has been going on for some 60 years, our district provides water to your customers, and you provide water to our customers. There's a mutual assistance agreement that's been going on. And under the mutual assistance agreement, if you have an outage somewhere so that you can't provide water to certain of your customers, there are some pipes that meet each other, those pipes are open, and our district provides you with water. So that, so that this is done, this is, this has worked well. Montecito's participation in the desal facility, assuming that something can be worked out, would mean that, as far as your customers are concerned, we would be picking up a large portion of that $55 million that is the obligation that you all entered into, which would certainly help your customers and help us. Both of us benefit from those economies. As far as the physical costs of putting the water through, there are various expenses, and there are, and there are economies of scale, because the same people, the same group, and I forgot whether it's six workers or eight workers that actually operate the plant, whether they're doing it for 3,000 acre feet of water, or 4,000, or 5,000, that same crew can do that. So there's great economies of scale in.
You're getting close to six minutes. I, so I just, I know your chair, you're on the one, I wanted to give you some extra time, but just to be note of the time. Thank you.
The proposed regional use of the Charles Meyer Plant today would be another opportunity for our two agencies to work together. It is our desire to continue the legacy created by actions of past City Council and our directors that will benefit both our customers and yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shakowitz. No, that's all right. We've been working hard on this, so, Mr. Newman, come on up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Charles Newman, also a director of the Montecito Water District. I just want to give you quickly four suggestions as to why it's in both the city's interests and Montecito's interests for us to proceed as your staff has outlined. First, from day one, Montecito, in this reactivation process, has supported the city in its efforts, written letters to the regulatory authorities, including the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Board, and also the Coastal Commission. As you know, those are not easy agencies to persuade. Having our participation in this facility on a regional basis as a customer receiving water will ensure decades of support from Montecito for future permit process. Second, this proposal that we work together on a water purchase agreement from desalinated water is truly not new business. As President Shakowitz outlined, we have done business together on water issues for many years in many different ways with the city of Santa Barbara. And it's more apparent now than ever that working together, your city and our water district, is a win-win for both. Our interests are so well-aligned in many things, be it the operation of Lake Kachuma, be it the state water project, or be it things yet to come, such as the twin tunnels, which will be before us in one way or another, such as possibly the movement of treated water. Thirdly, as President Shakowitz mentioned, having our participation as a customer affords the city a meaningful economic opportunity on a sustained basis. We are prepared to make a commitment to pay a sum to the city of Santa Barbara, rain or shine. So if there's an El Nino, we still pay. If we don't need the water, we still pay. That alleviates you of financial burden, alleviates your ratepayers of financial burden. And fourth, as was briefly mentioned by your staff, the pipeline and its construction, the conveyance facility, could be utilized to serve the future needs and particular needs of the city. We are trying to approach this problem, as was suggested by many of you when you were here on April 21, on a regional basis. We hope you will continue to do so. We believe that's in our best interest, and we'll work diligently and faithfully to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I could add one thing in response to your public question. We do not, we have a ban on swimming pools in Montecito. We do not issue permits or allow swimming pools. We have a ban on any new meters and service in Montecito, and we have also imposed fines and penalties on our customers who exceed their water allocation. All of that has resulted in a net 41 percent conservation total, comparing the base year of 2013 to now.
Thank you. And I think, Ms. Mario, did you have a question? Or were you just for comments? Do you have a question for Mr. Newman?
No, I did have a question. Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Oh, I was going to ask you what your conservation number was.
Yes.
So since 2013, it's 41 percent.
That's correct.
And the bans that you referred to with the pool, et cetera, those are temporary bans, I would guess?
No, we have an ordinance in place that prohibits the issuance of new pool permits that places moratorium on construction, which would require new water service, and those ordinances, unless changed by board action after a public hearing and the like, remain the law of the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for being here today. Okay, it's to the council. There's not a motion necessary, but any comments at this point be fine. Mr. Hart?
Well, I think Mr. Newman summarized well the where the city's interests and Montecito's interests overlap, and I do think, as a member of the committee that's looked at this number of times, it does make sense for both districts to be working together on these, on this issue. I don't know that it's intuitive to the public, though, how those interests overline, this align. This is a really complicated system, and as evidenced by the prior item that was on the agenda, the complexities of water supply are very hard to communicate because they are complex. But I, one of the things that has been particularly useful, I think, for us, has been the transparency that we have embraced from the very beginning of this process. We have these regular drought updates, and our meetings, as all our meetings are, are on television. I think we really have lifted up the hood on this process and let people see it as it is. And that was why I thought it was really important to bring this item forward to a hearing today, even though the negotiations are ongoing, there isn't a deal, there is just a concept and a framework for moving forward. I think it's been very helpful to us as elected officials to have that transparency because members of the public have had the opportunity to hear and see our deliberations on a regular basis and to sort of evolve their understanding of this issue at a very fine-grained detail if they want to. So I think it's really important that we have this item on the agenda. I think it's really, it will take some more time for people to get used to this idea. It will take some more time to work out the details. The details are important, and one of the most important details is the conveyance system for Montecito and the city. And in the long run, we need that system to be, to serve the city's needs long-term, in addition to serving the potential customers in Montecito. So I think that needs a lot of thought, and there is a tension between that deliberative planning and the need that Montecito has in the short term to get water. That is just the reality of the situation. It's sort of the problem that we've been dealing with since the very beginning, is the tension between, you know, getting this exactly right with less-than-perfect information as we make decisions going forward. But I do want to make sure that our staff thinks in terms of the long term for this conveyance system. We have, there is a long-term potential for a very different water system in the future involving potable reuse, and the pipeline that brings water from the general vicinity of the desal plant and the sewer treatment plant to the South Coast Conduit is potentially the infrastructure that we're going to need for that in the long run. And I think that we need to be smart about what that system is, and we need to size that pipe appropriately, and we need it to end in the right place for it to be flexible to serve all these future needs. And I understand that Montecito wants to have it done quickly to get the water to Montecito, and those things have to be resolved. I don't know how that works out best, but I want our staff in going forward with this interest-based negotiation to keep that foremost in its mind, and that there may be a point where that becomes a big concern, and that doesn't result in a resolution as fast as folks might want ideally. But I do think that, you know, the issues that have been, that the first, at first blush, like pools, you know, and the impact of using pools, or development and the amount of water that that uses, when people think of this term in terms of common sense, they immediately think, we ought to be doing things differently about those issues. And by being transparent and by really shining the bright light of the facts on all of those issues over a long period of time, I think we have illuminated the fact that those are not the significant issues, that the collective actions of voluntary not the significant issues, that the collective actions, the voluntary collective actions of our 90,000-some-odd citizens is resulting in remarkable water savings, and that that strategy of trusting that and investing in that and showing people the facts has proven to be very powerful and very effective, and has resulted in a very diverse water supply that we have and more predictability about costs and rates and supply than many of our other neighboring districts. And I think we should continue down that course, and I think we should be as transparent as possible. And I appreciate that members of the media are here today to write a complicated story about a complicated subject, and they have done a great job, over time, communicating this nuanced subject to the public. And we just appreciate that, and I just hope folks, when they really look at this, take the time to understand it as they form their judgment about it.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I appreciate that we've got a good history lesson, too, or a history reminder of how long the relationship between Montecito and Santa Barbara has been in place, that Santa Barbara deeded off the primary water supply for Montecito in the Farm of Hunkaw Reservoir, although those many years ago. And that today, we have an opportunity to move forward, yes, another step forward with another increment of collaborative supply. And that's a good thing. I think that the points were made about synergies of keeping this thing going at an efficient cost is true, and that Santa Barbara made some great moves between 1992 and the present to keep this facility going when it was considered to be... I was part of the crew that got embarrassed when we got our first glass of Desal water, and then it was, while it was just raining cats and dogs, and the plant was shut down the next day. But, so here we are, all these years later, benefiting from that plant, having been kept alive, just barely. It was a lot of close calls along the way. The two concerns are... One hope I have is, going forward, that we've seen, both districts, both agencies have suffered from, is our watersheds getting burned over. And I just hope that Montecito and Santa Barbara can collaborate to get, have a stronger watershed management program for all three of our reservoirs. This is just an area where there's not enough work being done, and I hope that we can look at that going forward. And secondly, from our city's standpoint, we're, our staff is stretched thin with all the projects. We hear Mr. Hagmark each month telling about this amazing list of difficult problems that the staff is handling. And I want to make sure to our own team, to our own management team, and I'm talking to our administrator team at this point, that we have enough staff, top-level staff, to handle all of these issues going forward, and that those costs are fairly, we want a fair deal. I want everybody to be able to look back in the future and say, this is a fair deal. But that our top-level staff is being stretched yet that much thinner to make this move forward, and I hope that that's part of the equation as well. I certainly support this moving forward.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Even as I recognize the benefits of a partnership, I'm not as enthusiastic as Councilmember White and Councilmember Hart. The Desal Plant will have significant environmental impacts, and for me, that's a huge responsibility to approve that plant. And what are the trade-offs of doing some harm to the marine environment so that we can have water? And I appreciate your 41% conservation rate. Ours is 34. But are we comparing apples to apples? Montecito has a completely different lifestyle from the constituents in my West Side, and I'm taking that into consideration. And I will do my homework as to what does that mean? How is that water being consumed? And what kind of lifestyle is it supporting? And is it okay with me and the values that I have, that I bring to this job? And I would say to our staff that just as good fences make good neighbors, I think a good legal agreement will make us good partners. Things are going to get tough, and the public speaker talked about how, you know, Montecito left the agreement back when. I wasn't here, I don't know the exact details, but if we're making a partnership, we will be in it together. And I'm very cautious. We're not taking a vote at this time, but I need to check in with my constituents as to going forward with this. There's a lot of implications here for me. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm very glad we're at the point of, and we're able to consider this a regional facility, because I think that's what really makes sense for us and our neighbors both. But I need to get my arms around looking at the projected water supply budget and what this agreement means, because I think a lot of the members of the public out there assumed that there were a partnership from the get-go, that we'd be increasing capacity. I realize this is a percentage of the initial startup, but our budget shows us using Desal in the column is about 3,000 acre feet. So how does, are we going to be able to produce more with that initial? Is that, am I missing a point here? Because I need to be able to explain this one.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, this is not going to impact our need to bring this supply on in October. This will be a parallel effort and be adding an additional treatment train, treatment unit to our existing facility, and it was designed to be expandable.
Right.
But this does not impact our ability to produce water for our, to meet our customer needs.
Right, and I realize this is a kickoff cost, and that we are anticipating being able to expand our capacity in the future. But that'll be another increment of expense, and then perhaps another negotiation regionally, or just maybe a standalone, I'm not sure.
And that's why part of this reimbursement agreement is exactly that. We need to kick off those discussions with IDE. What are the costs for expansion? Because the way this is structured, Montecito is paying the initial costs for development of the supply. We would be on the hook to pick up this expansion cost. It should be less per unit than the initial, but that's what we need to negotiate, and we'll be doing that in parallel to working on this agreement. So we will have all those numbers by the time it's time to really, you know, to enter into any agreement, we'll have all the numbers in front of us.
Yeah, well, we keep our initial source of funding in place then, that we anticipated, if we were standalone?
And that's a very good question. We do have, the state revolving fund loan that we have at 1.6% interest will cover the expansion of our facility. It will not cover the conveyance pipeline. It wasn't part of the initial environmental review. So that is one of the challenges that we still have to work out, is what will be the funding source of that? Montecito obviously would be paying that, but the city is going to have to seek out that type of funding. And so is it contractor, there's a design, build, and finance? So the contractor building the pipeline finances it? That could be one option. We're passing those costs on to them. We've talked about a state revolving fund, but as the council well knows, it's almost a year process to get that loan. And again, we've talked to them, and they said, yeah, this is a right project, we'd be happy to fund it. And we're like, but it's going to be a year of, you know, providing information to get that loan, and whether that fits into their timeline is another story. But we'll be exploring different financing methods. We estimate the cost of the conveyance pipeline is somewhere between $8 and $12 million.
I was just saying, I'm sure money's not going to get cheaper as we go forward, as the feds indicated. So, well, we look forward to more fun engineering reports in the future.
Mr. Dominguez?
I want to thank the visitors from Montecito Water District, Mr. Shekowitz. It was interesting hearing some of the history and hearing about CATER. And Mr. Newman, thank you for articulating some of the ways in which it is very meaningful for our agencies to cooperate. I really want to push regionalism, especially when it comes to dealing with natural resources, particularly water, especially when we're in a drought. And it's certainly a lesson we want to apply, not just to natural resources, but to transportation resources and ways to deal with pollution. My first semester in environmental law was actually in Mexico City, and Mexico City is in the middle of mountains, and it's this valley with really concrete underpinnings, so it's hard to get things in and out of the valley, and it's a horrible place to have the world's largest city. 20 million people in this very environmentally poorly designed, it's basically at the top of a mountain. It's a mile high. Air doesn't come in or out, so all the air pollution they produce sticks there in this valley, and the same thing with the water and earth pollution. And we need to think about our natural topography here and why we're building and developing. It was interesting to hear Montecito has a moratorium, Galita's doing the same thing, and we're subsidizing for-profit development. So it's kind of this weird picture in time. And I know historically, you have to look at the bigger picture and what people have done in the past and what we'll be doing in the future, but in current daytime, it's a little bit weird to think about that concept. And to see 2.5%, that's, to me, is a large enough number, especially if we keep extending that for the next couple of years. That's something we really want to take a close look at and see if we need to modify that. Thank you.
I also want to thank those from Montecito Water District coming today, and also for very easily sending letters of encouragement about regional cooperation to the Water Quality Control Board and the Coastal Commission when we asked for them. So that was very helpful in our process moving forward. And certainly looking in the big picture, I think ideally, one desalination plant for the region makes a lot more sense than you going through your process of the environmental review. For a second one, that might take much longer and cost significantly more than what the cost would be surrounding working together. So I very much appreciate this good faith effort moving forward. I do want to think about and ask our colleagues and staff to think about, as we're looking into this, that our current policy here in the city with desalinated water is that it's an emergency drought response. It's not a long-term water supply. And if we want to change that, we can, but we have to start those conversations. And what does that really mean? And we've been talking about that all along. We've been saying, this drought's here, we need to focus on how to address this drought and the water needs that we have, and moving the desalination plant back online due to that timeline because of it. But there's a long-term regional conversation to have. And this drought will end one day, but there'll be another drought another day. And so what's the role of Desal in between those times? And especially if Montecito Water District is interested and the deal is about, you know, they pay whether they receive the water or not, that does mean that the plant itself has to be operational for when they may want water and we may not want water. You know, I think those are questions, I think, that are worth us thinking about. And the implication of this, what I think is a good way to go in terms of regional cooperation, but how that relates to our policy here in terms of the role of desalination water as a water supply in the long term. So that's just adding complication to thing, but I know, you know, when we adopted the Water Supply Management Plan back in 2010, desalination had a particular role, and now I think it's time to start thinking about, are there expanded roles or not, and what are they? And I think this kind of deal or coordination with Montecito Water District is going to accelerate those conversations a little bit. So just some food for thought there. But thank you very much for being here, and I'm encouraged to see this move forward. And kudos to people in Montecito who are really looking to this drought very seriously as well. We each have our own different ways of doing this in the region, but at the end of the day, we're all sharing the same water area, especially through Lake Kachuma and the state water system. So when we all conserve, we all win, and that's really where we need to be. So, thank you for that. We don't need a motion here, so we will move on to item number 18.
Two-year review of single-use carryout bag ordinance.
Okay, Mr. For, when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Matt Forham, the Environmental Services Manager. With me is Lorraine Cruz Carpenter. She is one of my senior staff, and she was really responsible for most of what we're going to talk about today after council approved the single-use carryout ordinance. She put this all into place. Just by way of background, when we talk about the single-use carryout bag ordinance, this was an ordinance that council adopted back in October of 2013. The main provisions of it modeled those of a previous ordinance that LA County had adopted. Essentially, the ordinance banned single-use plastic bags from certain retailers, namely those that sell and distribute foods of various types. It required stores to only provide recyclable paper bags or reusable bags for their patrons, and it required them to charge at least 10 cents on every recyclable paper bag. That revenue source, the stores could keep to defray the costs of complying with the ordinance, whatever additional staff time might be required, or the tracking of data and things that the ordinance also called for. Specifically, it required stores to report annually to the city on the number of paper bags that they distributed, the amount of money they collected. And then some of the stores even went above and beyond the minimum of the ordinance and took extra steps to try to promote reusable bags. That was really the, as you can tell from this, you can, the goal of the ordinance was, one, to reduce greatly the number of single-use bags, plastic bags that are distributed through the city, and also to shift consumers and patrons toward the use of reusable bags. There were a couple of other provisions that required stores to provide free reusable or recyclable paper bags to folks that were on various types of food assistance. And then why we're here today is that the ordinance had a provision that two years following the adoption of the ordinance, staff would come back to you and give a report on its effectiveness. So that's why we're here today. If we define some terms, the ordinance applied at two different times to two different store types. We call them tier-one stores and tier-two stores. The main difference is the square footage. Tier-one stores are at least 10,000 square feet, and they sell a line of groceries, line of groceries or common food items. Or it could be a store with a licensed pharmacy. So what we're really talking about are large grocery stores, things like Ralph's and Albertsons when it was here, or the big pharmacies like CVS and things that had a refrigerator case and actually sold groceries along with it. There are about 17 of those stores in the city at the time that we adopted the ordinance. There are another 66 stores that fell into the second category of tier-two stores. That was really everyone else. So drugstores that had grocery items, pharmacies, convenience stores, things like 7-Eleven and your corner market and things like that. Those are smaller stores that sold a line of food, but they were certainly less than the 10,000-square-foot threshold. There are a couple of key milestones within the ordinance. The compliance date, so council adopted this ordinance in October of 2013. It went into effect 30 days after. And then there was a grace period for both types of stores. There was a six-month grace period for the tier-one stores to get rid of their stocks of single-use plastic bags. And then it went into effect a year later for the tier-two stores for the same reason. So the ordinance took effect in May of 2014 for the tier-one stores, in November of 2014 for the tier-two, smaller stores. And then why we waited until today to come back to you with the report is that the stores also had to submit an annual report to us with, to verify that, yes, they are indeed not distributing single-use plastic bags, they're charging the correct amount for the single-use paper bags. So we have that data now. The last of it came in in February of this year. And these are our findings. So after two years of this ordinance, we found that most stores easily complied with the ordinance. And we, at the time that this ordinance was adopted, we sent out a self-certification form, we gave stores information on the ordinance. Whether they fell into the two tiers, they came back to us, essentially signing an affidavit saying, yes, we are subject to this ordinance, along with a description of the tasks and the actions, a sort of a checklist of the things they would need to do to prepare for the ordinance. And then those that either did not send back a certification form or told us they were having trouble understanding or complying, we then went out and met with them one-on-one, and that's a lot of what Lorraine did. But what we found is, most of them were able to make the transition. They were able to go to recyclable, single-use paper bags, stopped distributing plastic, and they were able to charge the correct fee on single-use paper. We only found one store that was out of compliance. They have since complied with the ordinance. So out of 83 stores, we got 82 in relatively short order, and one that had some trouble. And in no case did we have to take any sort of enforcement action that's allowed under the ordinance. The other thing we looked at in preparing for this presentation was, you know, how did the actual results compare to those that we studied in the regional EIR that we under... did the actual results compare to those that we studied in the regional EIR that we undertook back in 2013? And as you might recall, the city, in a joint project with a number of other agencies, it was Beacon, the, the JPA. Beacon took the lead in developing a regional EIR that covered both Ventura County and Santa Barbara County. And there were various assumptions of how patrons would react to this ordinance. The first assumption was that patrons would indeed shift from plastic to paper and other reusables. And I'll get into some specifics on that. It also assumed that reusable bags would be used for, once a week for one year, and then discarded, so 52 uses out of that. It assumed that current paper bag users would go ahead and pay the fee. They wouldn't shift to another type of bag. And then the, the last one is that all recyclable paper bags purchased would be landfilled by the consumer. That was really worst case for the EIR, right? The EIR wanted to study the worst case that could happen, so we took that conservative set of assumptions. The final assumption I should note is that about 5% of the single-use plastic bags that are currently distributed in the city of Santa Barbara would remain, and that 5% represented non-regulated stores. Those are stores that don't sell food, that aren't regulated by this ordinance, things like retailers, clothing stores. They would continue to give out single-use plastic, and those would remain. So you'll see those, those numbers reflected in this table. So this is a table compares actual results to the EIR estimate. And if we look at the first column, total plastic bags in 2013, the EIR made the assumption that there were about 47.3 million single-use plastic bags distributed in the city every year in 2013. That number doesn't change. Our assumption is the assumption. What it did assume is that, if you look at the EIR estimates, it assumed that 65% of those single-use plastic bags would be converted to reusable bags, right? So about 30.7 million would remain. What it looks like has occurred is more like an 89% shift. We're seeing a big shift from single-use plastic to either reusable bags or patrons that are not, they're opting to not use a bag whatsoever. They go in for a small handful of items, scoop them up in their arms, and they walk out of the store. The ordinance also assumed that 14.1 million single-use paper bags would be sold at that 10-cent fee. What we're finding from the annual reports that those 83 stores submitted to us is that they sold about 2.6 or 2.7 million single-use paper bags. So dramatically fewer, right? It's sort of a mass balance game. So if we had 47 million, we know that we end up with 2.67 million single-use paper bags in the environment. And assuming that our 5% number of non-regulated stores is more or less accurate, then we've had an 89% shift away from single-use plastic to either reusables or to nothing. So that's, those are our conclusions. There's one caveat to this, and that's a potential data gap. And when we went out, we spent a lot of time with the stores as we were preparing for this, as we'd get their annual reports, we'd go out and audit some findings. We found that in speaking to them, and this is more anecdotal, large stores probably gave us better quality data than the small ones. Large stores that are corporate stores, that are, have more capacity, what we generally found is they have programmable cash registers. So they would, the, the registers, all registers were required to show a line item for the number of single-use paper bags sold. All of them had to do that, and they do. The larger stores tended to have cash registers that would store that data for longer periods, would store it for a year. They could go back and pull these records and tell us exactly how many single-use paper bags were sold. What we found with smaller stores is they said, you know, we don't have those sophisticated cash registers. We take daily tabulations of those, we record them, or we count them on daily cash register rolls, and then we tabulate that. It probably, you know, we just came away with the feeling that, uh, single-use paper bags could be underreported, by how much, I don't know. What we can say is that even if single-use paper bags were underreported, it does not change the fact that of the 47 million single-use plastic bags that we had, that, that those are gone, that we've had about a 95% reduction in those. That holds true. The number that may be underreported is that 2.6 million single-use paper bags, that may be slightly higher, but we not, we're not sure by how much. So our conclusions. We conclude that the single-use carryout bag ordinance was successful in dramatically reducing the number of single-use plastic bags distributed in the city. We found, we're finding that if, if our number was accurate, that 47 million plastic bags that we started with was reduced to about 5 million bags of plastic and paper in the end. About 2.6 million single-use paper bags and about another 2.3 million single-use plastic bags that continue to be distributed in the city from non-regulated stores. So 47 million down to five, pretty dramatic reduction. Our second conclusion is that fewer single-use paper bags were sold than were assumed in the EIR. That's the difference between the 2.6 million single-use paper bags that were sold versus the 14.1 million that the EIR assumed. Again, could be underreported, but it would have to be massively underreported to reach that 14 million. So I do think it lends some credibility to our conclusion that I think we're seeing a much, much, much bigger shift to reusable bags or to no bags whatsoever. So in the end, I think the final conclusion is, it worked. I think this is an example of an ordinance that really was effective and frankly was fairly seamless for staff to implement. And with that, we can take any questions.
Thank you. And no speaker slips on this item, amazing. So that says something in and of itself, not always the case. Any comments on, Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mr. For, for, that's really amazing. And I guess I had seen it myself, just, you know, being a person at the market. But I wanted to tell you that I saw a woman today, when I was walking my dog, carrying a couple of paper bags folded up under her arm. So you say, "single-use paper bags," but I think people reuse them either to shop again or, you know, at home for things. So the, all the legal challenges are done? Is that a good question? Because I remember some threats about this.
I see the attorney had, turning on his mic right ahead. Mr. Aklon?
I am listening. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, the main legal challenge that came up was over the 10-cent fee. There was a claim in, it may have been Los Angeles, that that fee was an illegal tax. But as Mr. For mentioned, the fact that the store owners get to keep that money was a saving that exempted that fee from any tax analysis. No one challenged the basic police power of the city to require the paper bags.
Thank you. And then I did notice that some stores, I think the plastic industry responded by making really thick plastic bags that are being sold now as reusable. And I think I have one or two of those in my rotation of bags that float from my car to my house to my floor. So, and those are, those are okay because they're, they're not single-use, I guess, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, that is correct. Those do meet the definition of reusable bag under the ordinance. There is an ASTM standard that those have to meet. They're essentially good for 125 uses when tested in a laboratory, so those are compliant.
And do you know if they're recyclable? And how about paper bags, too? If, if I'm done with the paper bag and I put it in recycling, it gets recycled, correct?
Paper bags are absolutely recyclable. That's another one of the ordinance requirements, that, that the single-use paper bag has to be 100% recyclable and has to contain 40% recyclable, recycled material in its feedstock. The, the reusable plastic bags, they should be, you know, plastic bags in a recycling container are difficult already. They tend to foul equipment and things. It's probably on a bit of a case-by-case basis as to whether they're pure plastic or whether they're composite material. Composite materials would be more difficult to recycle. But I, I think we're probably seeing many of them in the recyclable container once they're finished.
Very good. Well, congratulations. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 95%, 95% reduction is pretty dramatic. Have we seen a comparable reduction in plastic litter? When the, as I remember, it was sort of number 10 on the list when we put the ban into effect. Has it been reduced at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgekis, the jury's still a bit out on that. The groups that we lean on or that we previously worked with to get that data, I think anecdotally, they're saying, yes, we're seeing fewer. I think across the board, they will anecdotally tell us they're seeing fewer. I don't think that enough of the large cleanup events have occurred yet for their data to show a trend, but they're certainly keeping us in the loop on that.
Yeah, because I remember ServiceMaster was key in that, I think, in reporting from, like, Creek Cleanups and stuff like that. It'll be interesting to see. All right, no, I think that's all I have. Thanks very much.
As, can you update? So the county of Santa Barbara just adopted recently their single-use plastic bag ban. Carpinteria's had one before we did. Galita was on hold, right? And they're waiting for what happens with the state, which passed a law, and now it's on the ballot to repeal the ban. So we'll vote on that in November. Is that, is that, am I, is that, am I all up to date?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. The county did adopt their ordinance. The statewide SB 270 was to go into effect in January, and you're right, it's being challenged, and there'll be a voter referendum in November.
Okay. And that voter referendum won't have anything to do with our current ordinance, but obviously having something statewide, well, personally, I think that's better, but we're not, we're not in any danger of losing our ordinance.
It won't preempt our ordinance.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for the report. It's very exciting to see, and what we thought would happen, happened. So I appreciate the report. Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. Mr. Hodgekis. Mr. Hodgekis, yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Monday night, Mr. Hart and I went to a Westside-sponsored bicycle master plan discussion, and the staff did a great job in explaining one of the, what at some point people thought was contentious, was planning on Chino for a bicycle boulevard. And I think that the, there was, Mr. Hart, you correct me, but I think there were people like myself who didn't really know before, having carefully heard the staff explain what a bicycle boulevard was. And so when they heard it, then it, at least for some, made a lot more sense. On Thursday, I, last Thursday, I represented the city council and the mayor at the found, the ceremony of founding of Santa Barbara at the Presidio. It's always kind of interesting to see that. And they're very careful, they've got these guns that are flintlocks, and one misfired, didn't go off. And the fellow who was in charge realized it, went over and messed it a little bit, and blammo, it went off. So be sure nobody got hurt. But anyway, maybe that's just a actual, accurate reenactment of the way it was back then.
Mr. Hart?
Last week, I attended the Extra Step Awards put on by the Downtown Kiwanis Club, recognizing the extraordinary citizens who have assisted our law enforcement and other citizens in situations of distress and emergency, and just incredible stories of people stepping up and taking an extra step to really help their friends and neighbors. And then I also attended the Visit Santa Barbara Board of Directors meeting, where they talked about the letter that they were submitting to the city requesting additional funding for their extra expenses.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, some of us attended the second founding day event, which was on Saturday, and all the guns went off just fine. But there was a lot of pride in the founding of the Presidio, which was really the, the founding of our city. And I kind of look at that event as the kickoff of Fiesta, kind of like the pre-pre-pre Fiesta. And all the old families were out there, which was very nice. On Thursday, I attended an all-day seminar put on by the Conflict Solution Center promoting restorative justice. And thank, thanks to Police Chief Crumbak and Captain Alta Villa for staying there and hearing all about it. And our police department will play an important role in diverting young people from the criminal justice system, which is basically what it is. And also, I give a lot of credit to our school system for putting in restorative plans, programs. And then the League of Women Voters had a forum about the importance of preschool, and that sounds kind of obvious. But when you hear people from private and public preschool programs talk about really what it means, and there's some bills on the state and, that we'll vote on about universal preschool, just very thoughtful. Always the League of Women Voters, you're sitting there just going, wow, I'm so glad they, they brought all these issues, you know, to the surface. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Dominguez?
I also was at the Restorative Justice, and it was a really great event. I'm glad you brought that up. Also, attended the Santa Barbara Business College graduation ceremony Friday night, and they had a very large class graduating, and they're doing well. And it was, it was great to be present and see all the energy of these future leaders of Santa Barbara. I attended the Special Olympics kickoff at the Santa Barbara City College. And there's one other event, but I can't remember right this minute, but those were, those were great.
Mr. Hodgekis, did you have something else?
Yes, I neglected a report from the Airport Commission that year-to-date, January through March, passenger traffic is up 1.2%. And in January 2nd, our direct flights to Dallas start.
All right.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see. Actually, I attended the Presidio celebration as well, and the guns went off fine.
The cannon.
But the cannon didn't.
Right.
And so that was fascinating to watch the cannon not go off, and, and they, but with the reenactment, of that reenactment, it did go off. In any case, let's see, what else? Oh, and Ms. Mario and I had attended the orientation of the Ochuma Conservation, no, Central Coast Water Authority, which was a great history of, of the state water project, sort of flyovers, virtual flyovers and such like. And I did mention the one piece that, Mr. Stokes there, who's, who's now getting to be one of the, the last of the, of the old guard managers out there, described, as I mentioned, this, this effort to increase the, the pumpage or the flow through, through the importation pipeline. Another piece I thought was interesting is that Santa Barbara City, by far, has imported and is importing more water by spot market sales than every other jurisdiction, maybe even combined. And so that we're really, while we, getting state water itself isn't, hasn't been all that great shakes, the, the spot market purchasing of water has, has really saved our bacon during this, this interlude until the, the DSal is, is up and running. The Ochuma Operations and Maintenance Board had a, had a meeting on Monday, and two pieces there. One was the, just, there's one valve that, that, which is really the emergency flow valve for, for Laurel Reservoir, is completely kaput and is moving, and the, its replacement is moving forward on an emergency basis. I went back and looked at the, at the sort of overall infrastructure report of that system, and it's, it's really scary. There, every single one of the pictures and the stories behind each of the pieces of that system, which is built in the early 50s, is in very poor shape, very just old, and, and basically, they're running it to failure, and it's, it's just another piece of our story about infrastructure that we're obviously going to need to address. A second piece that, that came out there that is, again, it's, it's a frustration of, of our different levels of government. Currently, Ochuma is dumping a half a million gallons a day of water into Hilton Creek to, to main sustain the little steelhead population that we have going there. And we're dumping double that into the main stem of the San Inez River, which keeps a bass population there, which eats steelhead. And yet, we can't get that million gallons a day stopped. And it's just, it's, it's a, it's in the biological opinion of decades ago, and it's a, it's really is a vestige that's really hurting us. And we're using up our, our steelhead water such that we're going to run out of that steelhead account this summer. Whereas if we were able to stop that, we could probably keep those steelhead going in Hilton Creek all the way into the next rain year. So it's, sure wish we could get all the different agencies behind a, a, a way to keep that little population. population going in that creek. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you have one more thing, Mr. Dominguez?
I remembered what it was. It was the--
Can you put it? There you go.
I remembered what it was. It was the police statistical meeting. And crime overall is dropping, and it's, and that's good. But the one thing is burglaries to motor vehicles. So they wanted to make sure we get the word out, don't leave things in your cars when you leave your car out overnight. If it's not in the garage, make sure you don't leave your laptops, your backpacks, anything in your cars, because there's been a increase, an uptick in burglaries to motor vehicles. So keep your cars cleaned out.
I attended the retirement celebration for Reverend Mark Asman, who's been with the Episcopal Church for a gazillion years, I don't know, 30-plus years. And so, very much involved. We've seen him appear many times on many an occasion. So it was a really wonderful ceremony. And then this week, I'll be going up to Sacramento, actually, tonight. There's the League Lobby Days, and then there's a board meeting, of which I serve on the state board, so I'll give you a full report next week on how that goes with the League of California Cities. And with that, we have a closed session, if you could read that.
Item 19, conference with city attorney regarding anticipated litigation related to claims by David Andory Sr.
Okay. And we will adjourn from closed session to Monday, May 2nd, 2016, at 1:30 at 251 South Hope Avenue for a site visit regarding an appeal for next week. Thank you.